Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. If everyone will please stand, we're going to say the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, and Dr. Whaley will lead us in both.
Father, we come before you today with gratitude for your gifts to this city and for the opportunity to serve its citizens. As we just thank you so much for sparing the life of Captain Warley, and we ask you to bless his recovery and his family. As we get our work today, we ask for your guidance and wisdom for each of us to have a clear mind and a humble heart. Guide us with justice and fairness and a concern for all of our citizens. We just bless you for the opportunities and blessings that you give us and our opportunity to serve. In Jesus' name, amen.
Yes, so we are going to kind of ask for a moment of silence in conjunction with the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Jack, is that as we do that?
For Mr. Kirk, who lost his life. If we could, let's have a moment of silence. Will you all stand, please? Thank you, folks.
Okay, the next item is approval of minutes of previous meeting, and these were from August the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Have you all had a chance to review? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
A move, we approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Bill Bibbins is joining us by telephone. So, did you get that, Jennifer? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the administrative update. At this time, our co-interim city administrator, Ms. Mandy Cuddy, will give us an update.
Thank you, Ms. -- thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. Just by way of reminder, council, I have the first slides, just the hire dates, the engagement dates, as well as the priority responsibilities that we agreed on for our tenure together, which will come to a conclusion December thirty-first of this year. And I'm gonna hit the highlights for each of those. So managing -- moving right on into managing human resources, I'd like to update the council that new job descriptions have been delivered for the police department. We started with patrol officers, and we're currently working on new job descriptions for the sergeants and the police chief. We're also developing new job descriptions for the finance department. Currently, we have developed one for the accountant-one position, which will concentrate on payroll and accounts payable responsibilities, as well as the general day-to-day responsibilities. We've also developed an ad to be posting to fill that currently vacant position. Next in line in the next week or two, or three, will be new descriptions for a second accounting-one position, which will focus on revenue administration, as well as the finance director position with our city. We've also recently updated a job description for the receptionist position in our customer service department. Moving on to the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four audit preparations, which were priority tasks identified for us. I'm happy to report that the FY twenty-three audit is in progress. The auditor is actively on site with us, preparing her fieldwork. In fact, she's been here several days this week, including today. We estimate that that project is about forty percent complete and is likely to be submitted to the state within the next thirty days. About that same time, we expect that the FY twenty-four work papers that our financial consultant is preparing will be complete and submitted to the auditor. The auditor is prepared to roll right into her fieldwork for the twenty-four audit preparation, which also keeps us on track for our end-of-year deadlines. We did this past week verify with the state government and the federal government that a single audit of federally received funds during the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four will be required by the city, in addition to our year-end financial statements for citywide funds for twenty-four. That will add a few weeks of work on our audit preparation for twenty-twenty-four. So one of the items I've asked the mayor to include in your agenda tonight, and I would appreciate a motion to add this to the agenda, is a revised engagement letter with our auditing firm, so that they can prepare that single audit as soon as the citywide financial statements are complete, and one builds off of the other. So it's a natural progression in work, if you will.
Can I have a question? Is that -- we don't always do that? Low isn't it, the federal?
No, ma'am. Excuse me. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, the federal regulation was that if you received seventy -- seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or more in federal funding that you also expended during that fiscal year, then you trigger that requirement. So you may not have needed that in previous fiscal years. That's a year-to-year evaluation. And that number's increasing in, I think, in fiscal year twenty-five, it increased to a million dollars. Moving on to our finance department operational assessment. We have dealt a lot with our organizational structure and staffing. You guys may remember we recently engaged a finance director, and as I mentioned, we're currently advertising or will be very soon for an accountant-one position that's currently vacant and updated those job descriptions. Additionally, we have implemented new systems for our accounts payable functions. Our team's currently staffing on those, and we are actively developing processes and procedures that meet with Blue Ridge's specific needs, as well as your specific software functions, so that you'll have written processes and procedures for your team to follow when they engage in accounts payable activities. And since that will probably -- that position is currently being filled by our current staff member, who will actually move over to revenue administration soon. Those processes and procedures can be used to train the new hire that'll come in hopefully very soon. Additionally, we've implemented new systems and modules for purchasing. You've heard about this, you knew this was coming. We've added that module to our smart fusion software, which handles all of our financials. This will allow us to track your budget in closer to real time, because it will show not just expenditures, but encumbrances on budgeted funds. So that will really help with our budget reporting. And we're also developing processes and procedures that are unique to Blue Ridge. They do incorporate best practices, but they also contemplate your staffing levels, your software, all of those sorts of things. So again, you'll have written processes and procedures for your team to exercise. For FY twenty-five year-to-date, as you know, the bookkeeping, if you will, was a bit behind on that. We have been engaged for the last, I would say, month or so in reconciling the general ledger accounts to the bank statements to verify that our bookkeeping is up to date. We are about ninety percent, ninety-five percent, complete on the expenditure side from January one to July thirty-first of this year. We anticipate we'll start reconciling the revenue side probably in the next three weeks, two to three weeks, which means shortly, you know, within a few days after that, but certainly by the time we start the twenty-sixth budget season in our is for public discussion and council discussion, we should have budget reports that are reliable at that point in time. On fiscal year twenty-six, we are starting fiscal year twenty-six preparations. We started that a couple of weeks ago. We are starting on the capital side. We're doing that because those are the bigger projects that are gonna last five to ten years as far as lifespan or greater. Think paving roads, upgrading your utility systems, stormwater improvements, sidewalk improvements, fleet management. Those are the big-ticket items. We're starting with planning, and in that area, we'll move over to operations probably in October, early October, and we'll certainly have a lot more to say about that in the near future. Moving on to zoning and permitting. We did hold a planning commission meeting on September the second. Those reports with their recommendations were included in your packet tonight for your business this evening. There is no meeting for October, although we have had applications submitted to us. Those applications were considered incomplete or not yet ready for review by the planning commission. So the applicants are continuing to work on those. We do have, at this moment, I do expect we will need a planning commission meeting in November. We have changed the date of that meeting from November fourth to November sixth, because as you know, November fourth is election day. It's held in this room at the same time as what we would have the planning commission, so that necessitated a move. Additionally, the team is currently working on our twenty-twenty-six development calendars. And what I mean by that is four land use cases that will need to go either to the planning commission or to the city council. There's a number of legally required steps between application submission and coming to council for review and consideration. So we calendar all of the steps, all of those activities that are required by state and local law, and that gives us an application deadline and a city council hearing date. And we've mapped that out, so we can post those, and customers and applicants will know, hey, if I wanna be on the meeting in May, I need to submit my application on such and such date. We've had those for twenty-twenty-five. We've worked with those as best we can. We're working on those for twenty-twenty-six, so those will be ready very, very soon. Additionally, council recently approved the acquisition of a software to handle our permitting and licensing processes. It's called iWork. That's just an enterprise name for that software. That software is very affordable, and it will allow all of our permitting and licensing to go through a hub, but everyone can see everyone else's comments and review status simultaneously. So if I'm making a review, my review may be dependent on what stormwater said, or what the building official said, or what water said. Now, I have that information in front of me as I'm considering the zoning implications or the other implications for that review. I'll be able to see that in real time. They'll be able to see mine in real time. So that's gonna be -- that's gonna streamline our processes tremendously. So we're looking forward to that. I believe our kickoff call for that implementation is next week. As of today, there's only nine permits that the staff is actively working on. One land development, four building, three sign, and one demo. Those are not all in our court. Some of those are awaiting payment or resubmit by applicant. So that office is running much, much better. And we have also worked, the teams worked very, very hard to organize the filing system. So now there are historical files being built. There are new files being built as we have new applications that are parcel-based. So the goal is at any point in time, we'll be able to go by parcel number to a file and be able to see any current activity, any historical activity, be able to make a very informed decision as what the status or condition of that property or any part of that application is. And so if we're asked to take enforcement action or make a zoning certification or anything like that, we'll have that information at our fingertips, which will, again, streamline things very much. Council, I know some of you have asked for some more accurate or more up-to-date permitting reports. That will be a feature on the circle back of that iWork. That will be a feature of that iWork system. We'll be able to give you accurate, timely reports that are identified by, you know, what is in the applicant's responsibility in lane, what is in the staff's responsibility in lane, and the timeframes. How many days have we had, et cetera?
Is it just the council, or can the public see that?
That does not have a public viewing, but we would be able to produce that report very promptly and it'd be accurately through an open records request, absolutely. Moving on to occupational tax certificates, what we commonly refer to as a business license, as well as alcohol renewals. The twenty-twenty-five alcohol renewals that were backlog, all of those that were previously submitted have been completed and processed. The staff did run a verification report through the software and found that three establishments that had previously been licensed did not have an application on file. So we are currently working with those three. One of those is in legal review. One is actively working with the staff to become compliant, and one needs some compliance action. So that's where the twenty-twenty-five alcohol renewals are. And you'll remember that tonight, you have a reading on amending the alcohol ordinance strictly for renewal season. We did not do an overhaul of the alcohol ordinance. The only thing that this ordinance provision tonight does is eliminate the current ordinance requirement that each renewal be treated as if it were original, an original application, and require all of that paperwork and all of that review by both the business and the staff. This streamlines that and narrows it down to a much, much simpler review process that should not take nearly as long or be nearly as expensive for that business. All twenty-twenty-five occupational tax certificate applications that we have received have been processed, including the state and federally required paperwork that comes along with that. There are eighty-one renewals for twenty-twenty-five that remain outstanding, and we'll continue to pursue those for renewal. The twenty-twenty-six renewal season for both business licensing and alcohol licensing should open very soon. We are preparing for that. We're doing things right now, including updating our alcohol licensing application for renewals. We recently updated the OTC application. But our team is registered for training in early October with the Georgia Association of Business Tax Professionals. So we're gonna let the team go to that training in early October. That's gonna concentrate a lot on business licensing and the state and federal requirements that we're mandated enforcers for. We're gonna let them take that. When they come back, we'll finish our preparations for the renewal season, and then we'll announce dates that those renewals will open and what the processes are, things like that.
Eighty-one outstanding renewals. Does that mean that there's eighty-one that did not apply or that they are just still in the process of being reviewed?
Eighty-one that we have not received a completed application from. They may have submitted some of their paperwork, but not all of their paperwork. And I know that's a bit confusing at times for folks. We have basically a single page that needs to be filled out, but we are mandated enforcement agencies for the state and federal paperwork, like your SAVE affidavits and your E-Verify affidavits. And we, the city, have to make a report annually to the state that we collected those items and that we checked certain things on those documents. So that's why some of those eighty-one may think that they filed. They may have even sent their tax payment in, but if they did not submit those additional documents, we're pursuing collection of those documents.
And I will say, we have made a very concerted effort to contact them.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, in various methods of contact.
But next year, this is gonna be streamlined, so we're gonna save, what, fifty percent of the time it took?
You won't be talking about twenty-six renewals in September twenty-six. Not if you do it right. Yeah. Moving on to municipal elections. We, the team is actively engaged in training on the voter machines and various other parts of conducting the municipal election. The various team members that needed to be certified by the state have been. They successfully completed all of that, and we are receiving absentee ballots daily. If anyone wishes to submit an absentee ballot, that's state law. We have to implement the state law, abide by state laws. So please ask questions of the clerks before you make any assumptions on absentee ballots. Moving forward to code enforcement. That was an initiative that the council wanted to see engaged in. We have developed that job description, as well as various training materials. So we're moving that forward as well. There'll be more to come in that regard very soon.
I have a question, though. I've got an email or a text or something, or a door or something, on someone that was -- there was some noise going on. So, if that happens, who do you -- oh, I got it from a citizen complaining about some noise going on. So if that's the case, who do they call? Who, if they go to complain about something, do they call the police department? You know, who, if it's after hours, who do they call?
So most of our code enforcement is going to be about our ordinance violations. So they can just send an email or call the city clerk's office or the chief and leave a message. We'll take care of it. So our staff training, the staff's engaged in a tremendous amount of training. I'm trying to keep you guys up to date on this. I'm probably missing some candidly. There's folks going to a lot of training right now, so I apologize if I miss any. But I know one of our accountants just today went to Georgia Municipal Association Revenue Administration training. Both of the clerks have recently attended the Georgia Records Association training, either this week or last week. Forgive me if I got that wrong. And they've also, the city clerks, have attended the mandated training through the Carl Vincent Institute of Government. I don't know if you all recognize this or are aware of this, but your city clerks by state law are required to be certified. So there are certain training that they are obligated to attend, and they have been doing that. The Georgia Chief of Police Association, I think the chief just got back from home. From that, that's also mandated. Also mandated by state law for him to do that. I've already mentioned the gap-to-training that the permitting clerk and the city clerk will attend next week. The voting machine training, several drinking water, lab analysis and treatment class. And a couple of the field crew guys are currently training for their commercial driver's license. I missed some, but that's the bulk of it. So bear with that. That concludes my report.
Such an amazing job you both are doing. We really appreciate it. So it's amazing what we can accomplish when we have qualified staff. So thank you so much. I love you. And I say that to everybody that we have on staff. We have a great group of people who work for the city.
That's right.
We really do. So we appreciate everybody. Okay, the next item, we are actually going to ask for an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to ask you guys to add discussion to instruct city attorney and co-interim city administrator to negotiate mutual aid agreements with local law enforcement agencies and review the city's current benefits to Blue Ridge officers who were seriously injured or killed in the line of duty. And then, as an action item, authorization of entering a revised agreement with Welch, Walker, and Associates CPAs for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four audits to include a single audit of federal funds. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So move.
Okay, zero, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes. Is there a -- so I thought Tacey Jo was already -- was she not contracted due twenty-four?
Well, we will discuss that actually in a --
Okay.
Because this is just to amend it, and we can discuss it again, if that's good.
That's fine.
Okay, so, zero second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, the first, first item under discussion is a first reading and discussion of ordinance number VR two-zero-two-five-dash-ten and ordinance to amend chapter one-forty zoning, section one-forty-dash-four, use of definitions, section one-forty-dash-seventy-seven, area yard and height regulations, section one-forty-dash-one-zero-six, area yard and height regulations, continuing on and on. Do I need to read that whole thing? Thank you. With the code of Blue Ridge with respect to building heights to provide for an effective date and further purposes. This is the meeting that Mandy mentioned that the planning commission had September the second. So at this time, I am going to let -- Mandy, I will let you read the recommendation from the planning commission, if you will, and then we will open it up as a first hearing. We're not for discussion, obviously, with the first hearing. We're not going to have a motion. Okay?
Yes, ma'am. The planning commission did consider this text amendment on September second and voted, I believe it was four to one, to recommend the following. The building height means measuring from the highest point at which the foundation or any portion of the building first intersects the ground. In no event shall the building height of the primary or frontage facade exceed the current zoning height, nor shall the building at any point exceed fifty feet in height when measured from the lowest point at which the foundation or any other portion first intersects the ground.
Discussion. Yes, I'd like to say something about this. And I was at the planning commission meeting. I'm not real sure how this even come about other than that there was two variances requested, because this is something that we changed about a year and a half ago in trying to take measures to control growth. So we're doing the opposite. We voted on it to change it, and now we're changing it back because we had two variances. And I just want to give an example of what this could mean. So on Mountain Street, at the red light, there's a piece of property that goes from East First Street to East Main Street. And then it fronts all of Mountain Street from the traffic light to the four-way stop. If that, if we change this, then at the very top on East First Street, someone can build and go up thirty-five feet, and on the end of it, at East Main Street, they could go up to fifty feet. So that is, that will be pretty significant impact.
I also would like to point out, too, that I believe this particular -- this was done because there was, we needed a clear definition of where it started. Unfortunately, with the previous changes to the code, this really restricted and has hurt a lot of property owners. For instance, on East Second Street, one of the variances that came before the council. If they build from the current code, their house would practically have to be a single-story, flat-roofed house. And that's because the backside is steep. So if you look at, you know, a back basement, which is not even going to be seen from the front view of the house, so that's where we were running into issues with it, hurting property owners. And Jack, I know you actually visited the site. Denny's been dealing with this. We did have two variances, but we also had a lot of people coming to the city who asked questions, and we said, you know, this needs to change. So you have people waiting, and I think it is, it is a -- it has harmed people's property values.
Let me, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that it's completely opposite of what we were trying to do, and that's control growth. I mean, and the impacts that, so the trade-off, is it worth for these two variances or maybe even some other inquiries about it? Is it worth the trade-off? Because there's always give and take on things. I mean, there's always gonna be, if you rezon something, even this one that's on the agenda tonight, there's consequences.
How does it go into control growth? Because really, if it's a single-family home, you're not asking for multiple houses on a lot. You're simply saying, we'd like to build a two-story home.
Because it gives them up to be able to go up to fifty feet. So you got the bottom portion that's not accounted in that height, the thirty-five feet. But, I mean, otherwise, I mean, it would all be--
So when you say control growth, you mean actual growth? And not, not growth of--
Well, it's not only if we could only, if we could do it just in the residential, but I think it applies to all of them. If we do this, it would have to apply to all zones.
The way this is proposed, yes, it would apply to all zones.
Can't it be where the, could it be where you could just do it in residential? For those parcels that were difficult for someone to build on?
You certainly could. This portion, this proposed text amendment redefines the definition of how to measure building height. But the council sets the building height for each zone independently. So right now, I think you have a commercial building height of thirty-five and a residential of thirty feet, if I remember correctly. So we would measure it the same regardless of what zone it's in, but you could change. You could say thirty in this district, thirty-five in this, thirty-eight in that. I mean, that's for council to determine based on zoning district.
I don't think that's it. It's just like Kristi and I were talking about it. When I was at the zoning meeting, I understood you to say that the height would start at the highest point. So that means at the lowest point, then, they could build up to fifty feet. So it's almost like a basement that's not really included in that thirty-five-foot, whatever the height is. Is that right? Is that correct?
That's what the planning commission recommended.
Okay, so that means that really, we can see things like it at overlook, that you can, in the back of your building or somewhere, it can look fifty feet tall, and it can be fifty feet. So that's gotta be something, two-story, three-story, something, even though the front of it is only thirty-five feet, you know. So that's all I'm saying. It's--
Unfortunately, with certain lots in this area, we do live in a mountainous town, and that's just, you know, obviously, part of the topography. So in my opinion, you should not hurt property owners because they happen to have a lot that slopes in the back.
Well, that would apply, too, when you change a zoning from sixty feet to thirty-five feet.
So, yeah, I mean, we, and I think the changes were so extreme when you guys changed that prior.
Let's not get into a huge debate here. I'm the one--
I'm simply saying to consider it. I mean, it's something that--
Okay, let's say, Jack.
I'm the one who met with them for the very reason of this. First of all, let me say that we're not raising the heights of anything. The house is still gonna be thirty feet. You have a place over there, the big brick house you have. Sims are below you. All I'm saying is, and this is a good definition of Sims. This is street level, Sims property's here. So when they build their first ten feet, their top of their windows are gonna look onto the street. The only reason I wanted to do this was to bring it level with the street, and they thought, start their thirty feet from the street. So that when you drive down your street, you see the same row of houses built the same way. And I understand what you're saying about overlook, okay? But overlook, if you drive through it, all the houses down the main streets in there are all the same height. We are not in Miami. It's not flat here, so we live on terrain that's like this. The Sims variance should be allowed, they should be allowed to start from the street. If you buy something off of overlook, you should be able to build your house thirty feet at the top. Now, it will be, this one is, I get it, but it'll give you uniformity on the streets that we're, we're, we're going up and down, West Sec-, or East Second Street. If you drive down through there, in the front of that, all the houses look the same. All I'm trying to do is fix it so that everybody's on an even keel. I'm not raising heights either. If you'll remember, I'm the one that fought to get the heights where they are.
That, that's not really.
But I understand what you're saying, but let me finish. We're not, we're not raising heights, no matter what you read on Facebook tomorrow. I didn't say that we're gonna build houses fifty feet here. What I said was, if you go down East Second Stri-, or East Second Street, the houses are gonna be the same in the front. But you may have, you may have, it may be at the road here, but the back of that house may be a hundred-foot drop. That's why when Chuck and Rob and Denny and I met, we decided that, hey, let's try to make it so that it can't go fifty feet on the back, that's it. So that gives them ten feet of slope to build their house on. So for Sims, they would build up to the road in front of your place, and they would start their building from the level with the street, and they would build thirty feet up.
So what would it be on the back?
Well, fifty feet, no more than fifty feet on the back, but nobody's gonna see the back.
Well, there's people on some of the street that will.
Well, I understand, but you, you're gonna, we're gonna have to make a common ground here because it needs to be the same everywhere. What, the whole purpose that we all done this for was to keep the sixty-foot buildings out of town. But we have to make it uniform so that it looks uniform.
But will that be, will that sixty-foot building, when you can own it?
Well, that's honestly gonna be on a case-by-case basis. We're gonna have to have somebody that knows the ordinance, knows the code, and says, hey, here's how far back you can build because you can't go over fifty feet. That's up to us to have somebody to do that. I'm not fighting to raise building heights here to sixty-five feet. I'm just fighting for the folks that, like the Sims, that are even with the road, they should be able to build to the road, because I don't like looking down at a house. My house, where would you measure my house for thirty feet? Tanya's house, excuse me, where would you measure it for thirty feet? Because that house goes up the hill, and then it goes up the hill again. So where's my thirty feet? Where's it start? That's what we're trying to fix, that's all. Nobody's trying to get building heights raised.
And, and I didn't say that, I just said, consider that, if we change this, it changes for all zones, including downtown.
Well, I, you know, honestly, I didn't think about the downtown, but now if you look at Robert's Way, how tall are they on the front going down?
Well, it'll, it'll.
East Main Street, and then how, how high's the back?
Well, in my case, I own a piece of property there, so that means it's gonna be beneficial to me. I can go up thirty-five feet on East Main Street, but on the back, I can go up to.
I understand your point, I understand your point. I, I understand that. So what you're saying is you would like to change this ordinance so that it was in the residential areas only?
Yes.
You don't want sixty-foot buildings downtown?
Or fifty-foot, no.
Okay, we can, we can discuss that. What I'm trying to do is have the residents or anybody, Angie, you don't wanna go buy an acre lot here in town and not be able to build a nice house on it because you're limited to thirty feet, and you got a forty-foot drop-off on the back, right?
Well, that's, that, that's kinda what the variance is for, but I, I understand, we don't want variances to, all the time, so I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, there's always, you know, you do it to fix this problem, but then it can create another problem.
Well, you know what?
So you're saying for CBD, you would like to see CBD left out, what about C one and C two?
C one and C two?
Well, I, I, I think it should be just residential.
Okay, I think that's something for at least us to think about. We'll vote on this at the next meeting, and.
Right, I understand and agree, I'm not trying to raise, I, I just wanna tell everybody, so whatever you read on Facebook, I'm not trying to get sixty-foot buildings in downtown, all right? I'm just trying to make it so that if you buy a lot somewhere, and you got a, you're on a sloped area, you can still build your house, that's all I'm trying to do.
Which I think is fair, but I, I do think, and if anyone, you know, anyone has comments about it, please feel free to email us, but I think that's a great, good discussion, something to definitely think about, I.
And you brought a good point.
So we'll have to.
Well, I will say, they did say though, Mr. Barber did say the same thing, that we, we wanna, we wanna have an appearance of, you know, non-tall buildings, so it would have to be in the back. So, so it was, so it's like that fifty-foot would have to be in the back. You s-, you know, so like if you put your house in the front, or, you know, to where, you, 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 am I, am I saying that, how, how, how was it being said?
You want it to be uniform like the rest of us in the front.
I think, I think about.
The back is what's gonna be.
How Roy Parsons used to phrase it was, we had primary streets and we have secondary streets. So I think your objective is to, to find out, to make your ordinance say we would have a primary street with this, you know, which would be like.
That's a good point.
Yes, yes.
Secondary streets are the others. So I think that's possibly what you guys would want, how you would want to.
Can you and Mandy hook that up, Jack?
Even though, let's see, it still might not fix it like saying in, in downtown, so maybe we need to.
Well, if we, if we omit downtown from being able to do this, that might work, so.
Yeah, that'd work, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, um.
But now again, we're gonna have to approach this on a case-by-case basis, which means whoever's in, whoever our, our compliance officer is, is gonna have to be trained on what we do and how we do it.
So when we, when people submit plans for building, they actually do have, that's a requirement, it's a, it's a height, you have to do a plan, so the, uh, whoever's doing building permits would be able to look at it and see exactly what the height is going to be based on the plans and the topography, so that should hopefully.
Right.
And that's one of the implement, you know, things that Mandy's implemented, so that will definitely help in getting us processed with building permits, so.
Well, we also don't wanna go through every permit that comes through because somebody needs a variance either.
No.
We need to use some common sense, because what do we have now, Mandy? How many we have? We got eleven, did you say?
Nine.
Okay, so we got nine, so that means we would have to sit here as a council, go through nine of them. Do we wanna do that? I don't, so we hire somebody competent to take care of that, set the ordinance in place, and we just go on about our business and be the city.
Okay. All right, so we'll look into those things, and we'll vote, have our, um, second reading at the October meeting. Um, agenda items number seven. Let's see, that, we'll put this one in direction to, uh, A, discussion and consideration of a motion or application to rezon parcel BR zero two one dash one five three, also known as four sixty West Main, Blue Ridge. Uh, this is from a C one neighborhood to, which is in a CBD district, and he's asking for it to be rezoned CBD. And the planning commission also heard this and made a recommendation.
Yes ma'am, they, um, planning commission voted unanimously to rezone the parcel and create the application.
So now, this is another one that, if it's zone CBD, just like I was talking about the one on Mountain Street, they can go to the top at West First Street and build up.
Understood, understood.
And on West Main Street, they could go up to fifty feet.
Understood.
As long as it don't go.
You, you made a valid point.
Yeah, that could look really, yeah.
That's a valid point, you made a valid point.
And then on this also, and, um, could it be, could it be rezoned with a condition that they have to provide any build-out that they do, any additional build-out? It's a half an acre, it's got a big front yard, and it's got some parking in the back, but when it's changed to CBD, they can go within five foot at the front and back, and to the, to the property line on the sides. So that could be a big, you know, a big, uh, build-out if somebody wanted to do that. But if, unless it's, um, unless it's apartments or something on the top, they don't have to provide their own parking, so let's just say they build it all out for professional buildings. Could it be where you, they have to provide parking spaces? Because that's already very limited on parking there at the courthouse, between the Black Sheep and the courthouse.
So you're saying CBD would put some limitations on what they do? Doc, you're, you're a doctor.
I mean.
Is that not a pediatrician's office right there?
It is, it is.
It is, it's a pediatrician's office.
And it's got some other, other, other buildings.
So, should it be C one or CBD, Doc?
I think if.
Does it run into business out of that?
I will, I, I'm just gonna say that everything around it is CBD.
That's what I, once, next question was, is everything around it CBD?
If everything around it is CBD, then you're sort of treating them like, uh, stepchildren.
Redheaded stepchildren.
By keeping them at C one, and I don't know how, why it's C one when everything around it's CBD, that's historical.
Mandy, is that factual?
It, it is.
Everything around that is CBD, the Black Sheep.
Not everything, but it is predominantly CBD in that area, and.
Lynn Dawson's place, that's CBD?
And adjacent to it is CBD.
So everything behind it, she's R three, and then you have residential.
So I believe you have a zoning map in your packet.
But you do have a zoning, yes, you do.
But this goes back into controlling growth, just because it's, everything else is around it, doesn't mean that we have to do, it's just, it's, it's gonna be a lot more traffic if it's ever built out. It's just, it's just more, I mean, it's just more development.
Angie, then why don't you make a recommendation? And, and we understand what you're trying to say, but why don't you make a, if you feel that way, come up with a recommendation that you can present as a motion?
It's a good idea.
But that's how you feel about it.
I think she did, she wants to limit the amount of build-out in the parking there. You wanna keep a certain amount of parking, is that correct?
They have two parking spaces for any, anything else they build on any unit, so retail space or.
So state that for the motion.
Actually, if I may.
Let Mandy.
We've got parking requirements.
We do. That, that's only on, that's not on, that's not on just, um, that's only on if it, if it's second, third floor condos, and that's another thing, that's.
So, so if I may, the zoning ordinance actually gives you criteria that as a council, you should be considering in making this decision and having this discussion. So I'm gonna refer you to that criteria. One of them is the existing land uses and zoning classifications of nearby property. If you look at the zoning map that was provided for you in your packet, you'll see that the properties to each side and the front of that are zone CBD. So had, so the existing and nearby properties are zone CBD, which is the request of this application. Additionally, one of the other factors that should be considered in a rezon, and councilperson, or to your question about parking, is this, whether the proposed rezoning would result in a use which would or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of streets, parking, fire protection, et cetera. So my answer to you about could you condition it for parking, I would recommend that you do that only if council made a finding that to rezone this to CBD, which does not require off-street parking to be provided, that this would cause an excessive burden necessitating the off-street parking to be added.
So let's table it and look into it, how's that?
Well, I mean, here's the thing, if it's CBD, they can build up to thirty-five feet, that means on the second, on, they can build loft dwelling above. There is no way, if they, on a half an acre property, they do that, there is going to be, and if it's even opposite, there is going to be more traffic in and out. First of all, on West First, that, that goes behind the, the, um, courthouse where the officers come in and out, uh, and into residential. So there, there should just no way around it, it's going to cause them more problems with the limited parking that's there and traffic, so.
Okay.
He's correct.
Well, it, it, it would be hard, I think, to know, but I mean, it's, it's a given. You, you know, you build out property line to property line, it is going to add more traffic, no doubt.
It's not hard to know, when we have something going out downtown, they park from the stop sign back. Lynn Dawson's is covered up, everything down there is covered up.
I mean, and it, and it, and it, I mean, it's gonna just be more to those residents in the back. This is not what we agree to do.
Well, then let's table it, look at it.
I, I recall several discussions that we had in the past about rezoning, where there was the statement that the owners of the buildings to the right and the left, to the front and the back have been consulted, and that they are in agreement with the rezoning, or there is resistance to the rezoning because of, that we don't have a statement to that effect here. When Jack says, let's study it, that seems to me to be the sort of thing that we would wanna ask.
Well, councilman, to that point, by our local ordinance, we have, and state law, we have to run a notice in the newspaper, which we did, we have to put a sign on the physical property location, which we did, and your local ordinance requires that all of the adjacent property owners be notified by mail, and we did that as well.
So they were, we don't know what the responses were, are there were no responses?
None's final objections.
No, no one showed up in opposition to the planning commission meeting, so.
Well, this looks like a donut hole in the middle of CBD on this zoning map. And, uh.
I mean, it, it.
I, I understand what you're saying, but it is, it is don't, it's a donut hole in the middle of the pink.
Okay, so if you know the history of Blue Ridge, those were houses at one time down through there, and they, and, and over the years, they've been rezoned. As a matter of fact, the Black Sheep was rezoned from C one to CBD, I think two thousand nine. Um, that group, um, the one on the very end, it's the Dogwood, that was that house that a realtor lived in. That was rezoned maybe two thousand six. Uh, so they've all been rezoned through the years, but they still maintain that house look there. When you can, when you do it CBD possibly now, in today's time, you know, with the land values, I mean, somebody that pays a million and a half for that piece of property is not gonna, is not sustainable just to leave it a house.
I believe Mr. Williams did state that he felt, he thought he was included in that rezon and had not complained about it, or, you know, was, uh, opposition or he wasn't in favor, but he thought he was part of that. When he contacted the city, we had to tell him, no, you are not CBD. So it was his understanding, because the other two properties to the right have been rezoned, I believe that wa- I believe it was in two thousand nine, it was a couple of years before I came into office. He, that's exactly so, or one year. Um, but, and he did feel, you know, he feels that, and he, I think he just wants to be like the others on the street. Um, you know, I, I don't, I personally don't see a problem with rezoning it. You may want to, as you stated, maybe put restrictions for parking, so. As, as would meet our, the requirements for discussion.
What was the vote, you said the vote of the planning commission was unanimous?
As I recall, yes sir, it was.
But, but the residents on West Main Street, even like when the, when, when they rezoned, uh, the Black, the building for the Black Sheep CBD, and I've talked to one of the council members that, that agreed, that approved that, went for that. The residents, they don't like it. I mean, you know, there's so much traffic, you know, they're parking on the sides of the road, you know, they come up there and they're, you know, taking their breaks or whatever, and, I mean, it's just, it's just very intrusive in a residential area, and it's just adding more to that.
Well, and that is one thing that the, that council at the time should have, they should have staggered their zoning. In my opinion, you should never have zoning that goes straight from CBD to residential, that's just not logical. It should always be CBD, C two, C one, and then transition to residential. Unfortunately, this was a mistake that way before any of our time. So I guess we just have to, at this point, figure out, well, how do, you know, what do we do for this particular gentleman?
What's the hardship here?
So hardship's not a factor in a rezoning?
I understand that, I realized that when I said it, but what's the hardship here? I just wanna rezon it?
So I'm gonna go back to the criteria that's in your ordinance and tell you that hardship is not a criteria.
I understand, I knew it when I said it, so.
So what's your question?
They just, basically, they just wanna zone from C one to CBD, is that right?
Oh, but he, he stated in the planning commission to be, he said to be full transparent. It's because it'll increase the value of this property, I'm sure they were wanting to sell. He's, he's, you know, probably been in it in a while, so, you know, I mean, and that's, that's understandable, but, you know, I mean.
So basically, we have no idea what the end use would be in the short term. Now, obviously, everything else down there could be torn down and built them up again and again and again. We have no idea what the use would be after our.
Anything that's permissible in CBD.
Except, we think that he might, that they might want to sell.
Now, basically.
Which can, which should not be.
I, I believe we should table this until we review this a little bit.
Which we really shouldn't be discussing, the financial part of it, that's not part of your, uh, criteria.
I'm gonna agree with Jack, we need to table it and.
So I'll make the motion that we table this item.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's table that till, till next month, is that good?
Yeah, we do not have any, we do not have the owner here to speak to.
Yeah, he, he was on a, a business trip, or a, or a trip, so he cannot be here. Okay, the next item, a consideration of a motion to approve or deny a request from Tim and Jennifer Long, and I believe you guys, yeah, they're here today. We did table this from last month because you were not here, so, um, we do have the packet of information, but they're asking for the dedication of an easement of a city-owned property, and it's parcel number, uh, BR zero zero four five zero two zero. Uh, Mandy, would you like to go for this?
Um, yes ma'am, I'd be happy to. The Longs have asked for an easement on that parcel. That parcel is, uh, where the city's wastewater treatment plant is located. Uh, there is a map, I'm sorry that the pages aren't number, but there is a map provided in your packet, council, um, so you can see where the, it's a, uh, the wastewater treatment plant is outlined in blue. Uh, the parcel that the Longs own, or is in red, and there's a short area there where they're asking for an access easement, and unfortunately, that's all the information I have there, so I'd ask the Longs to address any additional. And unfortunately, that's all the information I have there, so I'd ask the Longs to address any additional facts.
Would you guys mind to come up to the mic and we can ask questions? Okay, because we are really somewhat unfamiliar with this too. It just looks like you need an easement. Is that what you're asking for, or do you, okay?
Yeah, we have to cross the cities.
Yeah.
Can you turn the microphone and speak to the microphone?
Danny, just sit down right there. I'm gonna ask you some questions.
And how long have you, how long has your property been, this road, there's already a road there, correct?
What, in that sense, two thousand six.
Okay, and you've been using the road since it, yeah, yeah. So, uh, and I'm sure you have a house there?
It's just, uh, like a rental trailer.
Okay, but you do have a property there, okay. So you're just, and you're asking for an easement in order to get to this property. Do you guys have any questions? Would you like to ask Longs?
What's on the property now?
It's just a single-wide trailer.
A what?
Single-wide trailer.
Is there any other way to get to that property?
No, there isn't.
There's no other road, Danny? No other road? How long have you had that piece of property?
Since two thousand six.
Two thousand six. So you've basically been, and don't take this the wrong way, trespassing on city property to get to your property, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Robbie, you didn't hear that. Um, but you have, so you're landlocked?
Yeah, I guess so.
You're landlocked. If there's no other access to that property.
If there's a wall in Georgia, you can't be landlocked.
So if you're, if you're, there's no other access to that property except by helicopter, then you're landlocked, is that correct?
That's correct.
So all you want is an easement?
Yes.
And I believe this would probably fit with a perpetual easement too, but not for real estate, if it's been in use over seven years.
You can't, you can't adverse possess the easement government.
Okay, oh, yeah, well, there you go. I learned something new today on, on that.
So, I, I think if you're inclined to consider it, one of the things, unless it's been done, and I'm not aware of it, but we'd need an actual survey that shows where the easement area would be. And who actually does that, us or them? Well, that's up to you guys, but typically, it would be the applicant, um.
Could, could we discuss this in executive session on, and I may, on what we could do and what it costs us, and then what, what, you know, we should ask for this, because I mean, uh, you know, land is worth a value, and, and we just paid three hundred fifty thousand dollars for an easement. I mean, you know, so.
We could certainly. How long is easement, Danny? How long of an easement are we talking about? The whole, the whole driveway, or just a portion of it?
Well, and, and, but, you may not, but there's still a value to it, and we can't just go give in that, because that can set a precedent.
Danny?
Well, then, then that would be fine, but we just need to.
Danny?
It's just like an easement that people give us on their, on the sides of the road so that we can run the utility lines. You're just giving them an easement to their property. It's, this happens quite often. We have several situations like this where this is centered.
Okay, so it, then I have no problem with that, but does that mean then that if, if somebody else needed one of the easement, and there was, and it, and it affected our property in a negative way, or like, do we have to, you know, do you give one, do you gotta give to everyone?
Angie, I think you look at every situation, every, every situation is going to be different, and every property ownership's going to be different. I think you have to look at it, like Jack said, with the other, in those terms. Every situation's different.
I, I would feel like our city attorney could word an easement, we've been doing, talking easements for years back then, that the purpose of the easement is a historical use of this property as a driveway to access a, a domicile. And that the easement is only for the purpose of a driveway to access domicile. Now, they're trying to, trying to get that, get rid of what they got there, build another house, and they gotta come to us for, uh, for approval. But I, I, I believe the, the fact that the man's been using it for over, for nineteen years or something. Uh, he deserves, he deserves to know that we're not gonna go out there and put a chain across it and, and keep him out of his property.
I don't think we would do that anyway, Doc.
Well, I know it, but you know, you don't know who, 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 who.
But I understand what you're saying. I just don't think.
So I would move, I, I would make a motion that we issue a
Limited.
Some sort of defined restricted
Limited easement. There you go.
easement for a driveway no wider than, well, you know, twenty-two feet or whatever it is, for the purposes of accessing a domicile. And that if it, the use of that property were to substantially change, that easement could go away. We donated land for a new library here, and it never got built. And we had the presence of mind to put a sunset provision on the donation, and it reverted back to us. So you could give him an easement that then had a sunset provision if it were in some way, uh, misused, uh, you know, if he, uh.
Is that possible, Chuck?
I would hate for it to restrict their sale, though.
Parking lot there or something else.
Yeah.
But I, I would, I favor giving the man the right to use his driveway and to, you know, keep it within a certain width and whatever our, our attorney and Danny say is the right way to restrict it and let the man drive his.
Is that possible? Yeah, that, that's pretty common, um, when somebody conveys an easement to somebody else. You can certainly limit the, the use for the, um, for the dominant estate. So that, I'm not that concerned about that. My, my primary concern is I don't know how to, I don't know how to describe the easement. I don't have a survey or anything like that. So you need a survey.
So would you pay for a survey if we do that for just that portion, and we, we can, we can procure it, you would have to pay for it, though?
Yes, we'll be fine with that.
And we could use, um, one of the local surveyors we work with, so if you were willing to do that, pay for that, would that satisfy? And then we approve, before we just give it to you, we approve that su- new survey. It comes back to us and let us approve it to make sure that the.
Let, let's do it on the basis that the survey and the, the attorney and everything is good. Continue to use the driveway. Let's go ahead and give him an easement contingent upon. He gets the survey done, and Chuck verifies everything. We go ahead and make that motion. We don't have to come af, we don't have to come before us again.
I think I already did.
You did. I second that motion, Doc.
I got one question, though. So, given this easement, in no way, I just want to make that clear, in no way restricts the city from the use of this property.
Absolutely not. Well, uh, hold on just a second. I mean, it, you would not be able to use the property in a way that unreasonably interferes with their ability to use the easement, right? So in that regard.
You couldn't build a building over that.
You couldn't gate it or something.
Yeah, or you couldn't, you couldn't put a building over the street.
Or if you did find a reason to gate it, you would give them access. Well, I, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on it, but I mean, if, if the city were to grant an easement to this property owner, uh, then that becomes a property right for this property owner. Um, and, you know, there, Georgia has laws that govern easements. Um, and so one of those laws says that we can't, even though we own the property, we couldn't use our property in a way that unreasonably interferes with their ability to use the easement. So, that said, I mean, you could always come back in later on and condemn the easement, just like you do any other property right. I'm not saying you would, but it's not cast in stone that, that the property owner would forever have the right to use that easement. But it is a property right that if, if they were deprived of it, they would have to be justly compensated for it. So I don't know if I'm answering the question or not, but, um, so, so it does, in some respects, burden the city's use of the property in that we can't deprive them of their ability to use an easement in the future, we, we could use it, it doesn't. unless we can condemn it. Yeah, absolutely. It doesn't deprive us of use of that either. That's right.
And it is near a corner, but, and it, it, you know, so I can, I can say that it probably wouldn't affect, you know, our ability to use it. It'd be different if, if it was in the middle of the property.
Right.
And that would restrict you from being able to do whatever, so.
Of course, that, that was one of the reasons that, yeah, right.
That Danny recommended it.
The way that, the way that bank falls off is, is straight off. So I mean, there ain't nothing to do with it.
Okay.
So you want to, do we want to choose a survey or let him do it?
I say let's use our own surveyor and let them pay for it. I think that's the most.
Is that fair enough for you folks?
Yeah.
Yes, that's good.
I would like, uh, Dr. Whaley, if you can put that in a motion again, because you didn't include the, the survey and that they will pay for it.
My motion is that we, subject to the lawyer doing the writing and a survey, that the, the burden for cost falls upon the applicant, that we approve an easement limiting the use to a driveway to access a domicile.
That is landlocked.
And then if he wants to put a department bill in there, it would, it would lose, he'd lose the, he would lose the easement. If he wants to put a pool hall there, he would lose the easement. He would only be able to use that easement to access a domicile.
Did you get all that?
Yes, sir.
And, and I can work with that, as long as I know where the easement is.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, second. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote on this one, Dr. Whaley.
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Bill? Josh? And Christie?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the next item is the second reading ordinance number BR, thank you, guys. BR, uh, two, two zero, two five, dash, zero, nine, alcohol. We're going to amending the requirements to renew alcohol licenses. This is what, uh, Mandy discussed earlier. Do you have any other discussion with it?
No, ma'am, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, this is the second reading. We discussed this last month. Uh, if there are no questions, drive a motion.
I make a motion. We accept it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Uh, Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jack? And Christie?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the next item that we will need to vote on is an action item authorizing us or me to sign a contract entering into a revised agreement with, uh, Welch Walker and Associates. And I believe, Jack, you may have had a question about this a minute ago.
I didn't. I actually talked to Casey Jo, I believe, yesterday, and she kind of gave me a summary, the same thing that Mandy said. Uh, I, the only question I had was, I thought we had already, um, contracted her for twenty twenty-four, but I guess we haven't, correct?
No, you did, you did.
We're just, this is for the single audit.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, if there's no further ado, I make a motion. We go ahead and do that.
Okay, is there a second? All right, let's have a roll call vote. Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jack? And Christie?
Yes.
Okay, um, I believe that's all, except, oh, yeah, we have one more.
You got public comments?
Uh, we can't escape this one. Discussion to instruct city attorney, co-interim city administration to negotiate mutual aid agreements with local law enforcement agencies and review the city's current benefits. And I will let you, would you like to talk about that, Mandy?
I want to say first, I'm proud of the local law enforcement for their actions on that day and night. I've discussed it with, not with our chief, but with others that were involved, and our chief and his people, he, uh.
Yeah, they do. And in fact, I don't know if you all know, but Rob was very instrumental in, uh, capturing the suspect. So he was, he was hands-on right there. So we're very proud of you. He kept me updated throughout the day.
He didn't have to run him down like in the movies or anything.
No, but, well, yeah. He did a great job. That's all we're saying. So thank you, and thank you to all your men. And I know the other officers, uh, were highly involved in, you know, from Friday night on, so thank you, guys.
Well, I think that says everything, Mayor, actually, is, is just formalizing our ability to go and aid other agencies when, in times of need like that, and also for them to come and aid Blue Ridge in times of need. And should the unthinkable happen to one of our officers that they're doing protected and their families are protected, maybe for one.
I know, and Jack's been involved in this, that, that when they need a SWAT team, they come up from Cherokee. And when you're using dogs, you got your dogs, and you got dogs from L and J and stuff. But they have been doing that for years. Uh, is, if he was in Polk County or in McCaseville and broke his leg, is there any reason that now he's not totally, I, I, I'm, I'm all for agreements.
You, you have to have a mutual agree, mutual agreement with, mutual aid agreement with every agency that you use or will use. And it's not only if Robbie broke, broke his leg, but let's just say that had went really south, and Robbie would have had to use his weapon in a justifiable shooting. That puts the city of Blue Ridge on the hook without that mutual agreement.
So we don't have those agreements in place, even though we're using them, right?
Chief, that's a question for you. Why don't you come to the podium?
Nope. As of right now, we don't have one with McCaseville. Now, while I was, was down there, I spoke with, uh, Mayor Arp, and we kind of mutually agreed right then. Now, when the sheriff's office calls us out, we, we can go under their color, pretty much color of law, but it's still, if we've got it signed, it just helps, it gives us another layer of protect.
Okay, is this only McCaseville we're talking about now?
Well, I think we had.
I was asking you to let us look at that and bring some more information back to you.
Okay, well, you've got one with Cherokee or something to get you, to get those, uh, SWAT teams up here and, uh.
Yeah, the sheriff's office, yeah, they have one with those, and we could go through the sheriff's office, sheriff's offices as far as that goes, but.
How many agencies, how many agencies responded, and do we have mutual aid agreements with those agencies, and do we need them?
Uh, again, they were through Barto, Cartersville. I mean, they were s- five or six agencies.
Do we need to have mutual aid agreements with them?
If we use our SWAT team, we'd go through the sheriff's office on that, and then they're, they're covered under that. But we will look at like, uh.
We can, we can let you guys look at that, and if there's anyone you feel like we need to add, we can get, have permission to that, or do that.
How about, how about the Tennessee, uh?
They did, yes.
That's a little more difficult across state law.
I know, it's, Doc, just asking a question.
Uh, yeah, in Tennessee, you know, we had the, yeah, I think the safe streets, FBI was down there. So we had Tennessee side cover, but by law, we're just certified in the state of Georgia, and our rest power stops at the lines right there, as well as North Carolina.
Correct. If I shoot somebody here helping Rob get somebody, I'm pretty much out on the limb.
Okay.
Um, you may give a motion if you'd like, but I, I'm just like, the mayor council to task us.
I make that motion that we authorize that.
Second.
And with any, any, uh, counties or cities that we need to, okay? And that is a second, okay? And all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Okay, next public comments. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the mic. Nathan, make sure that it's turned on, if you don't mind. I can't, we can't hear.
Yeah, it appears to be. So my name is Nathan Fitz, and y'all covered some of this in the, um, in the building height, but I just wanna, I just wanna say, um, in comments to the proposed building height, so changing the point in which you measure the building height, in my opinion, would be taking one step forward and two steps back, because I think Angie said a year and a half ago, this just got changed. So the whole purpose of, uh, making a zoning of, of, of an ordinance appeal is to, uh, uh, for variance, is for situations like that. To change an entire ordinance for one or two situations, to me, does not constitute changing an entire ordinance. I think the residents have been pretty clear that, that, that they're against further development in, in, in high buildings and stuff in downtown, like we have the Hampton Inn. I think the one thing that's been left out, though, is we were figuring today the height of the buildings. And if you have ten-foot, if you have ten-foot, uh, stories, by the time you add floor joists and stuff, after three stories, you're gonna be more than about thirty-three feet, because you got floor joists that say if they're even twelve inches. So I think unless you're gonna have flat roofs on all the buildings, the one thing that has been left out is the roof lines. So I think either maybe it needs to say that the beginning of the trusses and the roof line would be that height limit, or it needs to be raised just a couple of feet just to accommodate the roof line, unless they're all gonna be flat roof lines. Have y'all thought of that or considered that when y'all figured the, the height ordinance?
This isn't discussion, this is just public comments, so this isn't a discussion.
Got it, understood. The other thing I wanted to say is I think just as important of keeping the, um, the, the height of the building down is, I know that when there was a Downtown Development Authority, they were gonna take over the architectural review of, of the buildings and stuff. But I think the, the, the look and feel of the buildings are just as important as the height of them. And I think there needs to be some sort of consistency of reviewing the plans and some sort of guidelines for the architectural review, because that still has never been set up.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, if not, uh, I'm going to ask the council to enter into executive session, consideration of the motion to enter into executive session pursuant to OCGA fifty, dash, fourteen, dash, one.
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Uh, uh.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we, do we have a motion?
I move executive session and re-enter meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, and it's a doozy. I'm bringing before the council a recommendation to hire Jordan Caldwell as. I'm bringing before the council a recommendation to hire Jordan Caldwell as plant manager of the water plant, not to hire him, to promote him.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Jordan Caldwell promoted to plant manager of the water plant, Wesley Chastain as an operator, to hire two officers for the PD, and to take Jennifer Bates off probation, put her on permanent employee status.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Is Bill still with us?
No.
Okay, uh, Jack?
Yes.
And Christie?
Yes.
Okay, uh, do I have a meeting to, or do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Well, you sure do.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you all.